Good evening, everyone. Hello and welcome to the July meeting of the Three Lakes Board of Education. If everyone can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move into the Administrator Report on the Agenda Posting and Notification of the Meeting to the Media.
The agenda was posted at the Three Lakes School and Sugar Camp School via email to Town of Three Lakes, Town of Monaco, Town of Sugar Camp, and the Demer Library. Media notified via email included the Vilas County News, North Woods River News, WRJO News, WXPR Radio, and media notified by mail, WACD, WATK Radio.
Thank you. Do we have any amendments for the agenda?
No.
Hearing none, can I take a motion on approval of the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Stacy, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we move into minutes for the June 18th, 2025 Regular Meeting. Is there any additions or subtractions to those minutes? If there are none, when ready, I would take a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Stacy, second by Brian. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we move into the Treasurer's Report.
Motion to approve the checks dated June 12th, 2025 through July 9th, 2025 for accounts payable, checks number 242-500-308, number 242-500-338, regular checks number 131255 through number 131325, and manual checks number 5886 through number 5909, and the amount of $685,184.78, and ACH payroll checks number 900046063 through number 900046252, and regular apparel checks number 59430 through 59432, and the amount of $260,811.85 for the total amount of $945,996.63.
Second.
We have a motion by Mitch, second by Josh. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, are there any public comments from visitors regarding any of the agenda items? Go ahead, Mr. Coach.
First, I want to say thank you for allowing us to do our cross-country camp, which we take off for tomorrow. I was just in Ranglander picking up our shirts and food and all that, so I'm not going to stay very long because I got to go prep for all of that. But if you would allow me, and I know a lot of school boards only allow a couple of minutes for public comment, with your permission, I'd like to take a little longer with that, if that's okay. So, thank you for this opportunity. I'm obviously no stranger to board meetings, but I'm coming in a little different capacity today. As both a teacher, who wears several hats, and a parent who has three students in the district, there have been several things in my mind of late. I've raised some of these concerns at various times in different venues during my time here in Three Lakes, but I believe it's time to take my concerns a step further. While I have no doubts that I will ruffle some feathers, it's not my intention to do that, but I believe it's probably probable outcome, I do this primarily to help you be aware of several things as you make various policy decisions over the coming weeks and years. What ties most of my concerns together is the use of technology, but it certainly relates to education as a whole. This is particularly poignant, this is a particularly poignant issue today since technology completely surrounds us, and it seems nowhere more than in schools. For my purposes tonight, I'll define educational technology, or ed tech, as a student facing devices, which would include computers, laptops, tablets, cell phones, smartwatches, as well as the software deployed on them. Unfortunately, I, unfortunately, and I paraphrase someone much more intelligent than myself, ed tech is the largest human experiment ever conducted, and it's been a disaster. We were promised that this technology was the future of education, that it would revolutionize the classroom, that students would be more engaged and therefore learn more. We are now more than a decade in, and the ed tech optimism is fading as the academic benefits haven't been delivered. Global test scores have been in decline across the board. Often, this downward turn is linked to COVID, but the decline actually started back in 2010, at about the same time that one device was being put in the hands of students. It just accelerated during the COVID lockdowns. In fact, the results are so bad that Sweden, usually an early adopter of progressive ideas in education, and generally touted as one of the best education systems in the world, said in May of 2023 that we were all so wrong in regards to ed tech, and that it would significantly reduce student devices and start using hard copybooks and handwritten notebook. Study after study shows the negative impact of student technology used in the classroom, but it's usually lost amongst the sale pitches for the next best thing. When Sweden saw their scores drop and determined that it was being caused by technology used in the classroom, they made the bold move to remove it. They knew that more learning happened with paper and pencil than with screen and keyboard, so they made the necessary changes. Usually, at this point in the discussion, we hear the three excuses of why we can't remove technology from the classroom. I'm taking these excuses from a researcher named Jared Cooney Horvath. The first is, digital devices have so much potential. This is what I call the "tech is the future" excuse. Unfortunately, potential is only what something could be, should be, or what we hope it will be, is not what something actually is. Perhaps someday, some technology will revolutionize education, provide a truly positive impact, but today is not that day. In fact, by using the word "potential," these arguments are acknowledging that it's not currently the reality. Two, digital devices are ubiquitous, or the "they ain't going nowhere" excuse. I'm going to give you a list at illustrative point. Health insurance, taxes, video games, dating, marriage, divorce, mortgages, litigation, potholes in Wisconsin. These are all things that are ubiquitous, but just because something is ubiquitous doesn't mean that it needs to be taught in school. Some of these things should perhaps be taught in school. However, saying that a topic should be taught in school does not mean that all of these things should be taught through that topic. I see merit in teaching the use of technology, and we use it all the time in the fab lab. However, determining what should be taught is different from how something should be taught. Curriculum is the what, and is not the same thing as pedagogy, the how. Unfortunately, in regards to technology, we've confused the two, and by adopting the technology, it created de facto change in pedagogy. This change has been pushed nearly across the board of the educational establishment, including the federal government, DPI, the curriculum publishers, and even here in our school. I believe that we should be teaching computer skills. I would be thrilled if our students learned basic file management. They should be learning keyboarding. Our students' typing skills unfortunately are not great. Microsoft Office, et cetera, but it doesn't follow that we need to change everything else that we teach to achieve this goal. And yet, that is exactly what's happened in education. The third is that schools are using digital devices incorrectly. This is the "it's all teachers' fault" excuse. The OECD, or the Organization for Economic Cooperation Development, did an international review of the impact of computers in education, so that they looked everywhere, and they looked at hundreds and hundreds of studies internationally for this. After looking at the findings, they concluded that the building deep conceptual understanding and higher-order thinking requires intensive teacher-student interaction. Teacher-student interaction is vital, and unfortunately, screens get in the way of that. Studies continue to show that student use of technology for learning isn't the panacea that we were promised. In the U.S., governments spend more than $30 billion each year on ed tech, but we're not getting the promised returns. In fact, studies show that investing in air conditioning provides a greater positive impact on student learning than ed tech does.
Mr. Coach? I really appreciate what you're saying. We're at five minutes now. I would be more than happy for you to leave your information so that we can review the rest of it.
Just a second. I understand. I knew it was going to go along.
And do you have any suggestions based on the agenda item tonight?
I don't have specific things, and I know you asked for comments on agenda items. This does relate to AI, which I have some information here on, but also just in general, the overwhelming amount of time our kids spend on the computers and on screens. I don't think it's good for them, and I don't think as a teacher, certainly it can be useful, but I think as a teacher, we've become over-reliant on it, and I think a lot of times we end up doing a lot of teaching via YouTube than actually teaching ourselves. I will do this with you.
And really appreciate you coming in and having the conversation.
And again, I understand time moves, sir. You guys are probably going to be here late already on this one.
Thank you.
As I said, again, thank you for allowing us to do our cross-country camp. I'm going to leave because I got a lot of work to be prepared for. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Coach. Safe travels. Okay, any other public comments? Okay, next we'll move into Administrator's Report, Capital Building Project Update.
Okay, I'm going to be very brief, and I'm going to rely on Caleb. Other than to tell you, $17 point blank million dollars has been put into our funds. The money has processed, so that first step is done. Caleb, did you want to share any additional information?
I'll send out where that money's going tomorrow morning. Everything should clear tomorrow morning, and then I'll send you out exactly where that's going in a little email about how that's going.
Yeah. Which I think is, I never knew there could be so many people involved in your world, but I mean, it's gone, I would say, well, there's been some little bit of back and forth, but as smoothly as it could be, I feel very confident with the guidance we've gotten, with the folks that have been working with us, and it just feels good to know that that part of the process has gone out for bid, the bonds are out there, and things are moving forward for us.
I'll just say, on Tuesday morning, I met with PMA, and we developed a strategy where we've got, where we're meeting those spend-down requirements, so we don't have arbitrage, and then we're basically splitting it between like, keeping it liquid in that whisk, so we can pay the bills now, and then what we think we can put into CDs for the longest amount of time possible to earn the maximum return there. And then if we need kind of an in-between option, we're looking at treasuries kind of at the back end, where we can break that treasury a little bit easier than breaking a CD if we would need to add that liquidity. So it's kind of balancing all those three things, and like I said, tomorrow morning, after it's all official, I'll get you the numbers on where that's all going.
Okay. Thank you.
Terry, I have a little addition too. So the referendum website is back up and rolling.
Okay.
We re-upped the same URL that was being used during the voting process in the referendum, and now it's a project update, so it shows percentages where we're at with the design phase, and then as construction begins, those percentages will track also, so it's tied to a spreadsheet from Nexus that's showing the tracking there. We have just the basic information on there right now, we can add more as we go along, but that is available now and starting to roll.
Perfect.
Thanks, Jen.
Anything else on capital building?
Nope, that's it for today.
Okay. We will move into new business, starting with August meeting date.
Our Board Administration staff retreat is scheduled for August 15th at 8:00 a.m. in the Elementary LMC, and we've got that slated from 8 to 12:00. And then our regular monthly meeting is August 20th at 6:00 p.m. in Three Lakes here at the boardroom.
So we already took action at the June board meeting regarding the staff retreat. That's a regular monthly meeting. We will not made action. Next, we go into consider approval of the Personnel Report.
We have a hiring. We've hired Adam Utzinger for the Business Education teacher, and we have two resignations, Megan Reambrandt from Three Lakes Elementary, library aide and paraprofessional, and Daryl Dorpat, Three Lakes custodian.
Any ideas on why, just moving along?
Daryl is retiring. He's of age, and that was his plan, and Megan has accepted a job with Little Sprouts Daycare, and her passion is the littles, so she's very excited.
Congratulations, and thank you for their service. When ready, I'll consider a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Personnel Report as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Stacy, second by Josh. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unheard motion carries. Next, we move into final enrollment for the 2024-2025 school year.
Every summer, we bring this to the board to take a look at, to see what our final summary looks like. We had 517 students enrolled, 75 incoming open-enrolled, and 65 outgoing open-enrolled students. We are still at special education students of 91, and students who are attending RVA this year were nine.
Any questions or consideration?
Nice to have had the increase during the year.
We've had busy inquiries. Our open enrollment is ticking up, so always positive to see that.
Any estimates of what the 25, 26?
I think we're going to have more open enrollments in than out, and they're at the 4KK level again, and also we have some returning students, high school level, that have gone other places and are choosing to come back.
I know we were heavy on the 4K kindergarten last year. Does it, do those kids look like they're still sticking around?
Yes, they're staying.
Good, good. Okay. Next, we'll move to consider approval of health insurance provider's security health plan renewal.
Okay, Caleb and Cory, I'm going to let you take over, Caleb. Do you have any preliminary?
No, I'll just let Cory take over. Well, as you know, it's always one of our largest costs, and it's one of those things that keeps you up at night, you know, when you're staring down double-digit increases, and so I think we've got a plan that can keep kind of what we've got going, while also limiting how much of an increase we're going to see next year. So with that, I'll give Cory some documents. I'll start this on the side.
So my name's Cory Palmer with M3 Insurance. We work with the school district, do a lot of work with Terry and Caleb kind of behind the scenes throughout the year, and just to walk you through where with the renewal, we did look at alternate market options this year. WCA, which you've been with in the past, WPS and Anthem, all declined to quote because they couldn't come in at competitive pricing. Aspire's Health Plan did come in with a proposal, but they were looking at about a 13% increase over your current rates for a similar plan. So we really stuck with Security Health Plan, and one thing I wanted to point out is we have two forms here. This first one that says medical loss ratio. This is really important because when your renewal is calculated, they're looking at how much claims were paid out versus premium we build in. So if you look at the numbers, it's always a couple months behind, so this isn't as accurate data as we love, but they're always a couple months behind the numbers. But had some larger months, but recently, there were some pretty significant claims that were paid out in February and March, so it made, it put us in a tougher position to really try to leverage renewals, other carriers and things, because we unfortunately had some pretty big claims that came through the district during those months. So that was one key point in the renewal process, that because those hit so close to the renewal period, it takes some of that leverage away that we play in the market. So we had to work with where we were at, and if you flip over, first, any questions on this, how you read, it's pretty basic. It shows you enrollment per month, how many subscribers are your employees, members are all their covered family members plus the employees, and then bill premium is how much you paid in premium that month, and expenses, claims they paid out. And when it talks below there on IBNR is not included, what that means is when they actually underwrite you and look at your future renewals, they take claims that they know are coming in or high-cost conditions that they know are going to have significant claims in the next six months to 12 months. Those aren't incorporated into here, but we do know that some of the individuals on your plan have some significant claims that will bring some bigger claims in through the remainder of the year as well, too. Any questions on this form at all? Now, I'll switch over to this one, just a real quick refresher. I know some of you are very familiar with Security Health Plan, others may not be, but you guys are with Security Health Plan and what we call their broad premier network. So you'll notice, you know, I have that circle with some of the major hospital systems. The big thing here is you guys have a lot of Aspire's utilization. You still have some, a good degree of Marshfield, and then you have a scattering of other provider systems throughout the state. So we see UW, we see Mayo, we see a lot of those other systems throughout the state being used. So you can restrict networks, you can save premium that way, but we would have disruption in your population if you guys went to a narrowed type of network option. So there's always a cost reward for that. If we went to a restrictive network that, say, just allows Aspire's or just allows Marshfield Clinic, yes, we can shave on premium in those cases, but you're going to have some of your members that are going to have to find alternate providers because they're using those other systems. So that is a system there today that doesn't include all the other specialty providers that are there. When you talk about chiropractic care, bone and joints, GIs and elbows, aren't on this list, it's just showing the major systems. Page two, not going to go in detail, but this is just some things that are included in your program with Security Health Plan. Security Health Plan does a really good job of preventive care coverage. They run it a little differently than a lot of carriers, where they don't charge extra on a lot of preventive visits for having conversations about weight loss, smoking, cessation, things like that. So they are a more inclusive model on preventive care, which we find a lot of your members really enjoy versus some other carriers that do charge extra for those things that come up from preventive visits. So again, not going to go over those, but there are some other features with Security Health Plan program that we found pretty popular with employees. So the next page, this is your current plan. So what we're looking at here is if you kept everything the same, kept the deductible the same, and kept the out-of-pockets the same, Security Health Plan was coming in at about a 7.2% total increase. Now, one thing that changes is because you guys are an embedded plan, which means if you have a family on your, if I'm covering a family, each member of my family has an individual cap. So for instance, if I'm a family of five and I have a $50,000 claim, I don't have to pay that full $6,400 for my claims. Because I'm one member of the family, I cap out at that $3,200. It would take other members of my family to have claims to ever get us to that family cap. So that's what the embedded status means, is that there's individual caps within members of your family on what they can spend. So one reason I'm talking through that is because this plan is actually getting retired by Security Health Plan, because the IRS really governs that embedded status, and they increase that minimum deductible each year. So if you flip to the next page, you'll see the actual true renewal option for your plan, and that actually increases the single deductible from $3,200 to $3,300, and the family total from $6,400 to $6,600. So again, there's a slight decrease in premium increase because you're lowering the risk that Security Health Plan has to pay, but you are increasing the liability there. Now, remember, your employees aren't seeing that full deductible responsibility, because the district reimburses the lion's share of that deductible. So as an employee on the plan, if an employee is on single coverage, they pay the first $500 towards that deductible, then the district reimburses everything else up to that $3,200 or $3,300 deductible. So really, the reimbursement program is working well, and it's saving those employees from an increased out-of-pocket expense. Same thing on the family. The max the family can pay out is $1,000 in deductible responsibility, then the reimbursement arrangement picks up everything over that. So when you look at this, really that increased deductible here, if you wanted to keep your employee responsibility the same, where they pay the first $500 for single, first $1,000 for family, it's really the school district that would be picking up the difference in that deductible through your reimbursement program. So we know your utilization, not everybody is blowing through their deductibles in any given year, so yes, that's an added expense for you through your reimbursement program, but we don't think the cost is significant for that difference there, and it allows you to keep that embedded status with those deductibles, so you have those individual caps in the family. So that is one option, if you wanted to keep the structure the same. On the bottom there, you'll see pharmacy benefit, and basically what happens is today, whether you have a medical expense or a prescription, everything counts towards that deductible. So there's no copays until that deductible is satisfied, if it's satisfied. So let's say today I don't have any claims, and I go in and pick up a prescription. If that prescription is $74, I pay $74, that counts towards my $500 deductible for the year. When that changes is if a member hits their, in this case, $3,300 deductible, or as a family, $6,600, then today they have no more medical claims. They're done with medical claims, they're covered at 100% by Security Health Plan. But what they can have is you see that maximum out-of-pocket is $1,000 more than the deductible for single, and $2,000 more for the family. Today, if that deductible is met, and only if that deductible is met, then further prescriptions for the remainder of the year go on to a copay status. So if you had a significant claim, you pay your $500, the district pays the remainder of that deductible, and you go to fill a prescription after that point, then that prescription, you're going to have to pay that $10, $30, $60 copay at the pharmacy when you pick up that prescription. Those copays will continue as long as you have prescription for the remainder of the year, up until you've paid out an additional $1,000 as a single or $2,000 as a family. So that's how it sits today. That would be pretty much the same, because it's $1,000 and $2,000 extra today. That wouldn't be changed at all if you looked at this first plan option. The plan that we are, you know, recommending to the district to look at is a very similar structure, meaning the deductible is the exact same as what I just went through, copays work the same way. But in addition to paying copays after meeting that deductible, you would also be responsible for 20% of any medical claims after that deductible. So in the end, you still can have a maximum additional $1,000 out of your pocket per single or $2,000 per family, but instead of only getting there with copays if and when that happens, you could also get there by paying 20% of any medical bills, combined with those pharmacy copays, to that same additional maximum of $1,000 for single, $2,000 for family. So essentially, what this is doing is it's keeping the max liability for your employees the same. There's no change from today in the max liability out of their end. Where you will see a difference is if someone has a significant deductible claim, today they were done with that unless they had copays for pharmacy prescriptions they pick up. Today, they would be responsible for 20% of those medical claims to accumulate to that $1,000 and $2,000. So when we're looking at it, yes, there's a little bit more potential, that employees have a little bit more out-of-pocket than they would today, but when we look at the premium savings, it's a pretty significant number difference in that premium, where we think it's pretty justified, because you're still capping that top-end risk that your employees have and keeping that the same as today. I'll stop until you guys ask questions on any of that.
So just going over that again, their actual, while their deductibles and their maxes are here, their actual out-of-pockets aren't actually these prices, right? You said $2,000 and... and, or $1,000 and $2,000 is their actual?
Yeah, because the $1,000 is the difference between the deductible and that out-of-pocket maximum.
That's what you're referring to there. Got it?
Yeah. So, the out-of-pocket maximum is the same as it is today. It's just how you can accrue to that number is, that's what's changing.
Got it. You're referring to that. Okay.
Is there been any conversations or understanding from the staff?
No, we've just gotten these within the last two weeks.
Your recommendation has seen the renewal option, too?
Well, I think I'll let Caleb speak to that a little bit, too. If we want to stay as close to what we have now, it would be the first option. That comes in at the 6.7, which is fairly good, I think, when you're looking at 13%, 15% as the norm. We would have hoped for more bargaining power, but as you could see, that the last two months of claims that the data is based on had some very high claims. As Cory has explained to us, though, those are like one-time incident events, so we don't foresee that continuing. Of course, we can never predict the future, but that did have an impact in our bargaining power because up until that last two reports, we felt we were in a really strong place. The second option is favorable for the district, but again, we always want to look at taking care of our employees. If I understand correctly from what Cory has explained to us when we've been talking, really, it's going to be for that employee who might have a more significant event that's going to increase that extra through the co-insurance. Am I correct? And with our prescriptions, it really probably won't have a big impact. Do I understand that?
The prescriptions would run the same way as they are today, so that wouldn't have any impact. If someone doesn't have large claims and they only have those prescriptions after meeting deductible, that will feel and act the same way. It truly will only impact a small segment of employees that would have a larger claims year, where today, if they didn't have prescriptions, they're capped out, they pay their $500 or $1,000 per family, and then they don't see anything else in addition to that, where today they could pay up to that additional $1,000 or $2,000 as family for medical claims if they had some significant claims in any given year. And the reason we look at this option sometimes, too, is there's nothing fair in healthcare or health insurance and how it works, but this way, it keeps the premiums low for the large majority of employees. Those that have large claims, they're going to pay a little bit more in that year, but it keeps the premium base down for the entire population. So, just one way to look at it, but again, it's really where you guys feel it's best spent, but that's why we wanted to present that option to you guys review.
Did you do any sort of comparison from, you know, a high payer this year, what that would look like on the new plan?
So, yeah, I mean, there are going to be employees on your plan that today didn't have much for prescription utilization and really just had their $500 or $1,000 liability. You're going to have a subset, I think, I think we were estimating probably around 20 employees that would eat into this extra cost that maybe went up this year. So, it's not going to be zero. There will be impact there. It's really if you'd rather impact those individuals a little bit more out-of-pocket or raise premium floor for the entire group is really the piece. But yeah, there would be an impact.
The 6.7%, where you have the 159, 962 listed, what is that entailing? Is that the entire year?
The 159 is the annual premium increase from today.
That's the annual. Okay.
Based on, based on your enrollment staying stagnant. Obviously, there's going to be changes in enrollment throughout the year, but if your enrollment stayed the same, that first option would be $160,000 more to the district in premium. Now, that's total premium, so again, the district's only going to take 88% of that, but that's the total premium increase versus the second option there, which is that $36,000 annual increase.
So, I think the biggest question is when we look at the overall impact that it has on our employees and their full benefit package, if you will, I use that loosely. We did go with a 2% increase for staffing, which is lower, but our staff is well-paid. We're wanting to try to keep, as we always do, as similar to what we have in health insurance. At some point, we know insurance is probably going to get away from us and we're not going to have these options. We are not at the point yet that we could be considered as part of a consortium, especially with the high costs that we had, and we, as I've said every year, we are an expensive employee group. It just goes with our territory. And we have retirees that reply on this as well. So, that is the biggest, you know, it's the win-loss, the risk versus the reward in my mind, which is probably not the correct, but is the money that is saved upfront worth the impact it's going to have on a subset of employees? And is it going to impact their, their overall, you know, financial situation as well as keeping our budget within line? Because Caleb and I talk about that just about daily, you know, where we want to be and what's coming our way. Caleb, did you want to share any final thoughts?
I think Cory hit the positives here. It's the people who are using the plan the most who are going to feel this, which, again, nothing's fair in health insurance, but that seems to be one of the more fair ways that we can divvy this increase up. Otherwise, we're talking about an increase in premiums, which then all of our employees will see in their paychecks when that's coming out. So, we thought this was a fair balance between how do we move forward with an increase while trying to, trying to limit its effects on the total budget, but then try to make it the least impactful for our employees. And again, it's just a small subset. You said 20. I think it was less than 20 that.
I'm giving you a bigger number. It probably is, but.
Yeah, because it would only impact those employees that have totally maxed out that deductible, which is not a large amount. We seem to have a few amount of employees with very large claims. And then, obviously, from just a district perspective, being able to take, you know, what did you say was $150,000, turn it into $36,000? I mean, that's, I can't understate how massive that is for the district.
It's a big savings. I think where Caleb and I landed on it after a lot of discussion, thanks to Cory helping us guide our way through, I think that we both are comfortable with recommending the second option, but then with the support and helping our, our staff really, our employees understand where this comes from, how it's distributed, how it's still a very exceptionally strong and positive and favorable to the employee insurance plan. But yes, there will be an impact. We can't, we have to be real about that, too, and certain folks are going to see more. I guess one of the biggest things of comfort to me was knowing that we have some very high-cost prescriptions that are, you know, it's, you need what you need, and this does not impact that where some of the other options would, you know, have a very profound effect on our employees. So, that was also a benefit to this option.
Thank you for the information and explanation.
Welcome.
Any other questions, concerns? Is anyone ready to make a motion?
Make a motion. Make a motion to contract security health for 2025, 2026 to, to the plan as presented. I second, which option?
Would be option two.
Yeah, option two.
We have a motion by Mitch, second by Brian. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed and heard. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Cory. We appreciate you making the trip up for us.
Okay, next we move into preliminary review and consider approval for the 2025-2026 budget.
All right, Caleb, this is your baby.
So, one of, one of the, my favorite parts about Three Lakes with the budget is from year to year, we're pretty solid, meaning like there's not huge fluctuations in what we're doing. You know, we have our, our mission, we do our things, and for the most part, it's pretty steady going forward. That said, I feel comfortable, if you bring up that, that packet that was on the board docs, I feel comfortable presenting to you the Fund 10 and the Fund 27 budgets tonight. Those are where a vast, vast majority of our money is. Just for reminder, we've got a Fund 10, which is our general account. We've got a Fund 21, which is all of our scholarships and our activities. So, the state budget doesn't impact that at all. We've got a Fund 27, which is our special ed state budget, massive impact. You'll see this, this biennial budget. And then, we've got a Fund 50, which is the food service, which the food service is what the food service is going to be. And then Fund 80 is our community service. So, those three that I'm not talking about, really, the budget is what the budget's going to be, and there's not a lot of wiggle room there. You know, our scholarships do our scholarship things, our, our sports fundraised for themselves. Food service is food service, and then that community service, we can levy outside of the, the revenue limit. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to walk you through basically just the revenues, the expenditures, and then we'll look at the whole thing. I'm going to point out some of the big pieces here rather than going line by line. So, if we're looking at that first Fund 10 revenue budget, that very first page, the two big things here is that very top one, that property taxes. The state biennial budget increased $325 per pupil, and that was part of Governor Evers veto that he did, where that extended out however many years that went out. But that, that will increase our property taxes about $130,000. So, you see that's 9997387. Last year was about 9.8 million. The other one I want to bring your attention to is that open enrollment down there, that $800,000. You saw we had a 10, net 10. Looking next year, it's looking a little bit more favorable, and the amount of money in that biennial budget per student also went up a significant amount. So, we're looking at $800,000 coming in, whereas last year we were just over $690,000. So, that's 110 positive there. Now, the opposite to that is when we're talking open enrollment out, the open enrollment expenditure is about the same. So, when you take the net in verse out, it's about the same amount of money, a little bit more than it would have been. So, that's Fund 10 revenues. Everything else is pretty standard compared to what it was last year. I don't have anything to know there. When we turn the page to Fund 27 revenues, the big one here is that handicapped aid of $725,000. Just to give you an idea of where we were this year, it came in just under $508,000. So, the state biennial budget took the reimbursement rate for special education, and it went from 30.6% this year to 42% next year. So, that means we'll get back 40% of what we spent in Fund 27 this past year. We'll get that back next year. That's a very, very easy explanation of it. There's a little bit more that goes into it, but basically 40% of what we spent on special ed we'll get back now. And in next year, 2026, 27, it goes up to 46. And I can't tell you how much of a lifeline this was. This is what saves our budget this year. Because when we look at what our transfer is there at the top, that's just over a million dollars that we need to transfer from Fund 10 to Fund 27, whereas in previous years, we've been over 1.2 million. So, that's an extra $200,000 at least that we get to keep in Fund 10 for Fund 10 purposes. Flipping to the expenditures then, if we look at Fund 10 expenditures, salaries and benefits, they're always going up, and you can kind of see how they compare to last year. The things that I want to draw your attention to is that personal services. You'll notice that's going down. In what world are things going down in price? That's us holding off on summer projects this year. We are not doing any summer projects, knowing that we have that referendum in the works. So, it didn't make sense for us to be doing things when it's just going to be hit by the referendum. In capital objects, you'll notice that that's jumping up quite a bit from the $57,000 this past year to 105 next year. We're going to be purchasing a new school van, so that's part of it. We've got some renovations that we need to do in the home ec area face room, and then just some technology equipment upgrades that are baked into there. And then finally, you can see that 800s there, that inter-fund transfers. This, let me take a step back here. We're only 14 days after the fiscal year ended, so there's still a lot of stuff that's coming in, and I'm still cleaning up our books. So, a lot of this is estimates. When you see that $1.35 million transfer there, that's an estimate right now, but you can see how that goes from 1.35 down to 1.56, and that's that special ed reimbursement coming into play there. So, that's a big expenditure that, that we're losing there. And then, I guess the last thing I want to point your attention to in Fund 10 is that 900s dues and fees. You'll see a large $92,000 from this past year. That money was transferred from our Fund 10 to our Fund 21. We had student activity money in our general fund, and I transferred that out to get that with our other activities monies. So, it looks like an expenditure, but it's just the way that the state wants us to record that. So, it's really not an expenditure there. And then, finally, in Fund 27, the two that I want to point out is that personal services. You can go, the 300s personal services, you can see it's going from $204,000 down to 95. The main driver of that loss is we were relying on some contracted staff to do some services, while we brought that in-house now. So, that's 300s personal services being transferred to our salaries. So, you'll see what went down in that personal services, you'll see that back added into our salaries, and you can see that the salaries went up a little bit as much there. And then finally, with the capital objects, you'll see we got a $60,000 expenditure there and nothing in '23, '24, or nothing planned for next year. That was a replacement of a special education ban that we had to do last year. That was unexpected. Any questions on revenues or expenditures? Then, the next two pages, I just break out those expenditures into a graph form, and you can, you can see we're a people business, you know, salaries and benefits, that's, that's our, our main cost. And even in Fund 10 there, you see that, that gray, a lot of that gray is even salaries because that's a lot of our bus drivers and some of those contracted services that we're, that we're paying for. So, you've got a Fund 10 expenditures graph, a Fund 27 expenditures graph. And then, the last two pages are bringing it all together. And right now, very preliminary budget, but we're looking essentially even. It's, it's in Fund 10, we're down $3,500, which for all intents and purposes might as well be zero, especially at this point in the year. And then, for Fund 27, we always have to have a balanced budget there, and that's done using that transfer, so that's going to even out as well. And of course, this is going to change. It's possible it could change quite a bit, just depending on what happens over the next two months before I bring this to you at our annual meeting. But for right now, I'm feeling like we're in a pretty good place. For us to be able to come in at basically a balanced budget right now is great, especially since with our referendum, we, we're going to be in year three of that referendum, the dead middle. The way that we had planned that was we would be up $500,000, up $250,000. Year three, we'd be about even, and then the next two years, we'd be down 250 and down 500. That's just the way that we structured that. So, it looks like we're kind of on track to do that.
Caleb, this might be a naive question, and first, I think you've done an excellent job of kind of laying this all out. I feel very confident in what's here, but just given recent past, we've talked a lot, I mean, in the last six months before I was even on the board. But just given, uh, recent past, we've talked a lot, I mean, in the last six months before I was even on the board, about the capital referendum that we just went through and how that there is budgetary kind of allotment, maybe a slush fund, if you will, for future capital improvements that aren't gonna be part of the capital project. Where, where is that shown in here? How, where, where do we find that? I see that there's capital objects and is that just as it comes?
It has, it has been on it as it comes. Uh, my goal is, once we get through this referendum, NEXUS has done that whole outline for us, we can start a, um, Fund 40 where we can start putting money into that to do those capital projects. But part of having, part of, um, the requirements to open that fund is that you had to have a 10-year plan for your facilities. And now with that NEXUS, um, study that they did, we've got that. So in future years, when we run a surplus, if we've got a little extra money, you know, we can stick 50,000 into there for, for future capital projects. In the past, we basically just have run on a, well, what can we do this summer type of?
That's a lot of work. Thank you for making it understandable.
Try to pare it down.
Very nice.
If there are no other questions for Caleb, is anyone, uh, willing to make a motion on the preliminary?
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary 2025 and 2026 budget.
One second.
We have a motion by Brian, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard, motion carries. Thank you, Caleb. I know that's a mouthful. And you're back on the hook.
I'm back on the hook.
Consider approval of meal prices for 2025, 2026.
Um, so every year, uh, we, we go through this process. Um, and with us running a deficit, this past year, we're required to do the paid lunch equity tool, um, through DPI. And when we ran that tool, uh, we were required to raise it 10, 10 cents. In my time that I've been here, we've raised prices once, and that was in 23, 24, and that was for 10 cents. Otherwise, since the beginning of COVID, there have been no increases in lunch prices. So what I'm recommending is that, uh, we re, we, um, increased 20 cents this year instead of that 10 to try to, try and make up a little ground here, um, because we're running a deficit. And, and basically, we, we just need to try to stem some of the bleeding there. If you look down at the bottom, um, for a family with one student, if they were eating both meals, that would, both meals every day, that would, uh, equate to a $68.80 increase for that family. And then you can see down below there how much that would increase, uh, per family. Again, re- reminder that that is, um, if they're eating every, both meals, breakfast, lunch. So if you're only looking at lunch, you could half those numbers.
My only question here is, in baker's world, we can say decimal dust here, but, uh, if we're gonna go 20 cents, why not go 25, I guess? Just 'cause people can equate that to something easier? I don't, that's just my only thought. It's a quarter.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, I guess the way that I was thinking is just double the 10, but yeah, I, I agree. I mean, if we could do 25, that would, that would help us out a little bit as well. The, the amount that this would, uh, provide the district, if, if we went that 20 cents, uh, would be about another eight to nine thousand dollars, depending on, you know, who's buying meals.
I guess personally, I'd rather see the 20 now and then save it for maybe another 10 in the future rather than jumping 25 now. I guess. Unless we plan on sitting tight again like we have. You know, if this is gonna be a one, one-time thing for a few years.
We can't predict that. That's just not possible, and we do run a big deficit.
I can tell you, we're, we're gonna run a deficit in food service for the foreseeable future. So we're gonna have to do that paid lunch equity tool every year.
So we're gonna force it.
It's gonna be spitting out 10 cents every year.
Minimum.
So I guess by doing 20, it was maybe like a, a bid to, maybe instead of next year having to do 10, maybe we can get away with eight or seven, you know?
Yeah, which we could maybe round up on a little bit.
It just seems so small with inflationary prices where they've been to have any sort of an increase at that small of a dollar or that small of pennies.
Do you, do we see pushback when you bump it up 10 cents from families? Planning about the price, the overall price of the lunch? Do you get a lot of correspondence from anyone?
Not, I, I haven't heard anything. When, when we did 20, when we did that increase in 23, 24, I didn't hear anything.
I'm just gonna parent it. I wouldn't even know if you're gonna bump up 325 lunch. It's still a great deal. That's kinda like just the parent, but obviously where people fall. But I don't know if you got any pushback from parents?
Not that I received, but others certainly could have.
I don't recall any calls at the office that were, that were about the lunch prices.
Has there been any changes to the population eating?
Their house, it's, we're in a situation where the number of lunches we're selling is going down. The prices of food is going up, labor is going up, benefits going up. You know, it's just, everything costs more and we're selling less. So that's how we're getting into this deficit right now.
Speaking for the high school lunch, there are a lot of kids that break their own or have it delivered or are bringing food from the outside room.
And I've talked with Jill about this extensively, and she's seen those same things. It's a lot of bringing food in because, I mean, kids are tracking macros and, you know, their own health kicks and...
Mine aren't.
Mine just wants longer gym time.
That's the other piece, you know? We're seeing kids dip into the gym before they can, for sure. The utilization is obviously much higher elementary versus high school.
This is completely random, 'cause I haven't been here for lunch. Is there, is there other opportunities to, for children to spend money on like à la carte type things?
There is not, unless they want to purchase, uh, like a second entree or an extra side or an extra milk. We don't have another.
Has that ever been discussed?
We used to have it.
We used to.
You could get cookies and all kinds of stuff extra.
So is that, I, I, obviously not for like this action, but is that an opportunity for us to?
Federal law changed back with the healthy and wellness and eating program. And that's what eliminated the majority of the à la carte choices. That's why those things went away. Because that was, and that was before my time here, but I remember when the law changed, um, that took away a nice source of income, because still we're getting something.
Yeah, 'cause there's still, there's schools doing an, an à la carte option that's...
Generally within different ti- well, I don't, the nutritional value would have to be accounted for. I don't know what the paperwork end would be for us. Um, before and after school, possibly it's more open, you know, that you would have more options.
We're, we're certainly gonna have to discuss scenarios like that, or, or the board's gonna have to decide that they're just gonna eat that deficit and continue to put, put the money towards it. 'Cause it, it's just not sustainable as, as it is right now.
Right.
And, and it's not gonna be sustainable.
Well, we're not feeding them steak and lobster.
Even with a 25%, uh, 25 cent increase, I mean, that's not gonna make it sustainable either.
Yeah.
We're just so far, we're so far gone at this point.
It does round up the numbers nice, you know, as far as, that's three and a quarter, 350, you know? So.
That is easy math.
Nice and easier math, yeah. Unlike Brian said, for pennies, so.
And I'll still say as a past parent and even looking at the grandparent option, you can't pack a lunch like you can buy for a school meal for 350 a day. I mean, the nutrition, the value, the choices. You get a hamburger at McDonald's, it's $3 for a little, you know, maybe a kid would prefer that maybe once in a while, but they're not comparable, and I think the quality of what you get, so.
Even comparing between school systems.
Yeah.
What Jill's doing in there is quite remarkable. I mean, we're buying full, fresh vegetables, and we're chopping those, and, you know, we're not just buying canned stuff and don't count on, it's, it's good home-cooked meals in that kitchen.
Yep.
And there's not many districts that can say they're still providing that to their kids.
So are we moving forward with the 20? Are we making a proposal to increase to 25?
Well, I, I'm comfortable making a motion at 25.
Caleb, is that?
Yes, that's, that's.
Anyone else on the board with feedback as far as that?
Do you want me to tighten up the language on that?
Yeah, so just when you make the motion, identify the increase.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll make a motion to approve meal prices for 2025, 2026 school year at a 25 cent increase.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Brian, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed? None heard, motion carries. Okay, next we move to identify and consider approval of academic standards for 2025, 2026.
Okay, well, you probably got a little concerned when you saw the amount of reading that you had in your packet. First of all, I wanna just kind of, uh, set the stage here that we do this every year, and I've just, in the past, brought to you, this is the, um, standard approval. Nothing has changed here, but because Nikki and I are so immersed in the policy work that we're doing, and it's so much fun, we wanted to share it with you. And I thought it was a good opportunity for you to actually see what those look like. These are the annual notices that we're required to do. They go into our website, they go into the publication of the newspaper, and it is based on, you know, what we are required to do. So unless there are specific questions regarding any of these policies that you found in your reading and preparation, we can go forward, if you're comfortable, as we have every other year, and make a motion that we would go ahead and approve the, um, annual postings of the annual notices like we normally do. Um, but if you had any specific questions, I'm more than happy to provide explanation or clarification for you.
The asbestos management is really interesting.
Yes.
If we could go through word by word.
I almost sucked into that, and I was gonna say, do you really wanna know where Dave goes and what he does? 'Cause when he tells me I'm going to that asbestos conference, I was saying, you poor soul. No, those are your boilerplate, yeah. You sucked me in there.
Sorry, I had to.
I'm getting a little war from all the policy reading we've been doing this summer.
I have a box of unopened asbestos tiles at home.
No, I would have to, like, if we can go over this. Um, does anyone have any questions, consideration concerns over? Hearing none, is anyone willing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Wisconsin model academic standards for the 2025, 2026 school year as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Stacy, second by Josh. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard, motion carries.
I think I actually combined almost two in there. The, the same thing goes for the standards, this goes for the, um, the annual notices exhibit.
Yes, we had the academic first, and then now we move to consider approval of the 2025, 2026 state and federal parent and student annual notice requirements. Any questions, concerns regarding this agenda item? If there are none, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025, 2026 state and federal annual parent and student notice requirements as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mitch, second by Stacy. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard, motion carries. Again, thank you for your continued work in the policy updates. Next, we move into consider approval of staff conduct policy.
This is a policy that we did not have as standalone, and I wanted to get this in place, um, again, because the next phase now we're moving into is the update of our employee handbooks. And I felt that, um, just this past year, there's been some situations that brought to the top that we needed more of a formalized statement that encompasses staff conduct from everything from, you know, disciplinary to potential termination. And this is a very simple policy, but it captures that, and it will set kind of the base of that umbrella when we worked on the, um, policy handbook for the, the staff underneath it.
So is this, the intent of this is something that the staff would sign, similar to like a student handbook? Or it's just a policy?
No, it's taking the language that's in the current handbook that's very informal and tying it to a specific policy. Language isn't changing much, but it, uh, didn't circulate back to a, or correlate back to a policy.
Okay. Any questions, concerns on this item?
This policy hasn't been updated since 2011?
That is, that is by, um, WASB. Our district policy probably hasn't been updated since 80s and 90s.
Yeah, no, this, this one that's presented to us, I just wanna make sure that that was the...
That is correct.
If there are no questions, is anyone willing to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve policy 522, staff conduct as presented.
Sorry.
Motion by Stacy, second by Josh. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard, motion carries. Next, we move to consider approval of the 2025, 2026, 7 through 12 student handbook.
You're off.
Oh, I got an awful lot of enjoyment of this.
I've been waiting for this, absolutely. Um, you all have a digital copy of this, correct? I think by my math, there's eight spots in the student handbook where we're recommending either a deletion, an addition, or a modification. Would you like me to go through each of those individually? Or are you comfortable enough with the rationale that's over in the notes? What's your pleasure?
They can't see if there's to only one.
Yeah, I mean, I looked at four, but I can't follow along here.
You won't read to, uh, send it to like a PDF or? There might be, there's a word down.
So then, so then for sure, I'll speak to the specific changes individually, right? If you can't see it?
That'd be great if you...
I'll, I'll fire this off everyone right now. I've got it up, I'm ready to go.
So the very first one would be found on page seven, if you're able to see the doc. Um, and it's under the heading of absences and excuses for set absences. We're, and when I say we're, we are, uh, obviously I am here making these recommendations. Many of them have come from staff, many of them have come from Blue Jay Table. Uh, some of them are individual requests for consideration, but all of them have my stamp of approval, or you wouldn't see them here. There, we're just asking to take the... There, we're just asking to take the phrase that's highlighted, uh, shopping trips, hair appointments, non-medical appointments, et cetera, are not excused absences. In order to highlight that a little bit or accentuate it, we are going to, or would like to move that to the bottom after number eleven and put it there with an asterisk, just to kind of call attention to it. It's kind of buried there in, uh, point number ten, and hoping to maybe call a little more attention to it. If there's ever any questions, please raise your hand or be available, and I will stop, otherwise I'll just move on to the next suggestion.
How do we different, like, how do we differentiate from a parent excused absence between going on a vacation to Florida or a shopping trip to the Dells?
We would have to differentiate that based on the parent's word, note, email, whatever.
Okay.
That, you make a good point.
My, my question is, if I, as a parent, if I choose I can't afford to go to Florida on vacation for a week, but I can take my child to Minneapolis to the Mall of America for two days, who is the school to tell me that's not an authorized or an excused vacation?
Correct, I, I, I agree with that statement. What this is trying to, what this is trying to ferret out is that I'm checking my kid out because I'm booking a hair appointment and they're missing their physics test, or what, whatever, you know what I'm saying? There, there's always going to be some discretion there. And if, and if we, and if we're going to the Mall of America on a pre-planned trip, we have, we have avenue for that with the pre-approved absence form. And if that's not a student who's already overspent their absences, I would sign off on it for sure, i- in, in the little vignette that you described.
I'm just curious, if parents have excused absences available and they choose to use it, what, what, uh, why are we, if I want to send my child to a hair appointment and she's got an excused absence, like, I have parent excuse absences left. I guess that's my, my concern is, like, how are, how are we dictating what parents choose to take their children out for? That's excused or not? I, I, as a parent, have ten excused absences.
And I agree that most of them could be bogus because of something the parent might want to do. At least, you've seen it?
Yep.
But I agree that we should, like, once those ten are up, then enforcement has to be done once they're abusing their, it'd be hard to regulate that until they reach their ten, and once they reach their ten, there needs to be enforcement in my action taken against if they're gonna keep hanging out.
This is not, this is not new language. This is a language that's always been there.
Yeah.
I think the, I don't think I know between Ryan, Anna, myself, we would say that very recently some of the things mentioned in that phrase that have always been there have been abused.
Right.
Overused, if you will, for sure. But no, there's no, there's no, and, and the ten absences that you guys are quoting, keep, keep in mind, that doesn't, that doesn't come for the fifteen that are allowed in our vacation clause.
Right.
Remember, ten, ten, ten is the state-recognized, you get five per semester, parents.
Yeah.
So we're, we're actually a little bit looser than that here, or more parent or family-friendly, for sure. So.
And again, we're not changing anything, we're moving the verbiage
Yeah.
to just be a comment worked differently within the document.
To, to, to in essence communicate to families, we prefer you didn't.
Yeah.
We're not gonna send you truancy court if you do, because you get your ten or your fifteen, but keep in mind, especially in the attendance section, we are, and Steve would probably attest to this, and Mark's been finding this out of the hurry, we're, we're usually getting spanked by the state for our attendance. We're not doing super well on that, 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 that's why you see a meets expectations or exceeds expectations, rather than significantly exceeds expectations on a state report card. Not that that means huge ill beans in anything. But it is, it is a certifiable fact that we're, we're dinged every year on our, at least at the high school level, we are dinged on our butts aren't in the seats enough. So, there's a little bit of a, not called an action, not an emergency, but we, we want to tighten the reins just to shade on that regard.
Maybe not in this conversation, but maybe in the, the next conversation when we go to do this in draft, that, that's a consideration to go from fifteen to the ten, as the state standard.
Yeah.
Right, because that would help us.
Yes.
Attendance-wise.
The other thing would be is to, okay, let's take this step here, trying to make it more visible, where people might think more about it, because yeah, like I said, the next step is either that or cracking down a little harder on, you know, once you get to your fifteen that you're allowed. Which I know there's only so much you can do anyways, but.
And instead of lack of, like, when they reach their maximum fifteen days, or it goes to ten days, and we're getting dinged and it keeps happening. Like, are you guys notifying three lakes, so they, someone can make their call to the parent and talk, hey, I know the letters go out, but does three lakes, can you make a phone call to the parents, also advising them, like, schools sent your letters? We can see you, you have your letters, you reached your maximum allowed days, you could be looking at a truancy citation, or whatever it's gonna be.
Yes, yes. We, we also would like for, which we don't have in place right now, and, and it would help. We don't have a local ordinance for truancy, simple site. There's none. So, our option. Our, our option.
There's a state statute that they can write.
We've been told no. Every time we ask. So, so right now, our only option is the habitual truancy, take them in front of the Monday morning intake.
Who's told you that, like, three lakes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because simple sites are really great for situations when parents aren't approving of an absence and an absence still occurs. Those, those are super handy, I've found in the past, they're, they're, they're quick, they're simple, and they're effective. Not that it always has to be the stick, but that's usually a pretty effective tool.
Yeah, there's a, the Wisconsin statute says all or part of a school day. So if a student misses one hour on excuse, they can be written a simple truancy.
That would be a wonderful tool.
It's, it exists.
Hyper-effective.
Yeah, 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 for, for, for the student who, let's just say, I want to go to Mugs for lunch, and the parent doesn't necessarily want them to go to Mugs near the end of the school, but they leave anyway. That's, doesn't happen real often, but those are the ones where a simple site is super effective. The next, just, just to shade down the document, uh, on the bottom of page eight and the top of page nine, we're suggesting to completely eliminate the language that is highlighted in red. Uh, the reason we're suggesting to eliminate it is it contradicts another part of our, and I'm, uh, I'm surprised I didn't catch this sooner, but in this, what we're suggesting to delete, it contradicts what we have written in our uh, family vacation part of the code. Because in there, it says that family trips will not be excused, and I don't like it in there because that's simply not true. Unless we're going to, at some point, not make the family vacation an excused option, then this particular phrase is somewhat contradictory, is very contradictory. Also, um, I don't like the clause in there, illness to the immediate family will not be excused, because there's times when stuff is hit in the fan, where we would excuse an absence for a kid if there's a major illness in the immediate family, your mom, your dad, a sister, a brother, that's something that we would excuse. So it doesn't, this phrase doesn't match with current practice. So suggesting that we completely delete the part that's highlighted in red. Questions on that? And the next part is page eleven, going by the page numbers. This one, again, is still under the umbrella of a slight maybe tightening of the reins. Whereas in past practice, there's been some, uh, text messages are honored to give permission for the kid to leave. We are upping that just to shade to say emails will also work, or emails must be, emails are note. Uh, the notes are pretty traditional, we get a lot of notes. But if there's another email to school staff will also suffice if you don't have a written note. Uh, we'd like to add that into the closed campus section. And also, the open campus phrase that was there made it, if, if you, if I was a student reading it, I could certainly give the perception or have the perception that, well, I'm a senior, so I have open campus every day. This is denoting that open campuses here, open campus lunches on Wednesdays, and that's provided that you have the correct documentation turned in, parent permission, and submitted to school staff. So it's, it's just clarifying that we've done open campus on Wednesdays every year since I've been here, I think it's been that way for quite some time. But the statement that was there was kind of vague, just saying you have approved senior open campus. And if I'm reading that as a kid, I'm going, woo-hoo, I'm a senior, I'm all. So. Moving along, there's no questions on that one. The next one is page fifteen, I believe. Get there, yeah. On page fifteen, we're suggesting or, or recommending some of the language to be deleted, uh, because it is redundant. And this has to do with when a student gets kicked out of class. Sometimes students are kicked out of class for things that aren't terribly what I would call earth-shattering, or certainly not major in terms of discipline issues. Perhaps the kid and/or the teacher needs a timeout from each other, and so they're asked politely to come down to the office and work in the conference room, uh, et cetera, et cetera. In situations like that, we don't feel that it's necessary that the teacher and the principal, or the principal's designee, uh, get ahold of parents immediately. We certainly will, the, the, the teacher certainly will, initiate that contact and let a parent know, but we don't feel that it, because every time a student is sent out of a classroom, doesn't necessarily mean that every time that happens, the kid is in big trouble, so to speak. So, uh, feel like it's, it's overkill a bit to dictate through this language that parents will get contacted by both the teacher and the principal in situations that aren't, uh, worthy of disciplinary consequences. However, uh, as has always been the case, if there's a disciplinary consequence attached with that removal from the class, yes, the parent will hear from, be connected with, uh, the principal or designee within the twenty-four hour, uh, period as stated. Questions on that? So not a change in practice at all, just, uh, don't feel that if there's a timeout needed, every time, it doesn't happen real often, but there are times where parents will get notified by the teacher, but they, if they get notified by the principal, again, it's kind of made it to a bigger deal than what it really is. If that makes sense. Down to twenty-three.
Just quick question, quick question on that. I mean, staff is aware of their need to reach out to parents?
Yes.
I mean, they're not depending on you or a designee?
No, it is a, it's a written, in our, in our guidelines, uh, first day in service, if you are ejecting a student from your class, you are also connecting with parent, because invariably, if someone from the office calls, there's gonna be questions, like, why, what happened, what was the, who better to share the specific situations of why the student got ejected from the classroom than the person who's in the class, the adult in the room, right? So, uh, yes, that is not anything new, and that is a part of the expectation, for sure.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, next one is a fairly simple one with regards to food service, page twenty-three. Moving right along. Currently, the student handbook states that money can be turned into the kitchen or the office in the morning. Parents can call the office to authorize credit card transaction. We want to delete that because we don't handle money in the kitchen, and we don't handle money in the front office any longer, it's all done, and parents know that, it's with a credit card, infinite campus language is in there, um, and that's how we, we take most of the payments. But if we're not doing it, we shouldn't have it in our in our language. Next one, lockers on page twenty-eight. If you don't have any opposition to it, uh, well, I hope you don't, because we haven't been charging kids for a change in locker combination. And since we haven't been charging kids for a change in locker combination, we're suggesting that we take that phrase out of. There is, there is a still nine-dollar charge for a lock, if you lose it, that remains. But no charge for changing a locker combination, in fact, I don't think that happens very often. Next one is page thirty-four. Caleb, I hope this wasn't curvy off too much, but we're, we're looking to delete the chart that was up there for rating the dirty books or loose backs to the books at a quarter cost or half cost of new. We're just going to rely on the phrase that a fine will be levied for lost or damaged books. Just because it's, there, there, there's nobody with the time to go through books and say, well, this is a quarter damaged or half damaged or third damaged, and assess appropriate chart spot for where the fine levies. So, just kind of to match the functionality of where we're at right now, we're suggesting to eliminate that part of the textbooks. And it still does say, obviously, if you lose or damage a book, you're gonna see a fine on your student fine list. That's, still remains. Last but certainly not least, we are suggesting, for the first time, that we infuse AI language into our student handbook. It has not been there. I would say that we're about two and a half years behind the curve in putting it in. Not for lack of not caring, uh, but because there's a lot that goes into this, and this little paragraph that you see here is a result of a couple of years of SLATE conference sessions, which SLATE is the technology integration into education statewide conference. Lot of resources there about AI in the last couple of years, a lot of sessions about AI in the last couple of years. This is the work of the seven people on our Blue J Table Teacher Leader Crew. This has been on the agenda with our faculty, entire faculty, since October of this past school year, that, hey, we're, we're, we're aiming to put something into our student handbook with regards to AI. Please get your Blue J Table reps, your thoughts, your discussions, your input on what that should look like. This was up on the board in Hermanson's room for a better part of three hours. In, in the most recent, uh, AI work time that we had, AI policy work time that we had the day after school is out. And then it was in a Google Doc where everyone on the Blue J Table had editing rights to be able to go in and make suggestions and tweaks, aiming for having it in front of you tonight. So, there's been a lot of input put into this. I, I will, I don't want to say caution you all, but I want to, I, I, I think a really neat phrase was, was given by one of the keynote speakers at the SLATE convention that I was in, in the audience for. Uh, and it was, I, I, I forget her name, but she was the head of Google. Google has three main branches, and she was the head of the Google branch that has to do with education. And her take to all the school folks in the room was, hey, do you feel like AI is getting out in front of you? Do you feel like you're, you're, you're able to, to get, to get a, a corral around it? Of course not, because we can't either, big tech can't get head of AI. So, her advice to schools was, don't spend a whole ton of time trying to predict what it's gonna look like tomorrow, because, my gosh, we don't know what it looked like yesterday. So, anyway, long story short, this is a relatively simple AI policy. There's a phrase in here that, that I would, uh, go to bat for, that we have to have in here, based on what I've seen, what I've heard, as far as districts getting run through the legal ringer. And, and, and this one is, is very protective of us, the, the phrase that says violation of the aforementioned AI guidelines is a form of academic misconduct and will result in consequence. Because districts in this state have lost lawsuits already where if students are penalized for using AI, and it doesn't have that phrase in your student handbook, the districts have lost every time. So, we want to make sure that we're very upfront with people that. we're very upfront with people that inappropriate use of AI, and that, that in and of itself is a very loaded phrase. What's inappropriate use of AI, right? But it's equated to or is equal to academic misconduct. It's just like cheating off your buddy's test, looking over their shoulder, in the definition of whether or not consequences are set. So, students are responsible for generating their own content, following the guidance and expectations of the faculty. There's reasons for some ambiguity there, because AI use in an English classroom looks a lot different, or maybe it's not existent in a different classroom. I don't see Jason Stedman stressing a whole lot about AI in his FIAID classes, right? Like, so, there, there's got to be some leeway there for faculty members. Students may use AI tools to complement their learning and enhance creativity as permitted by their teacher, while maintaining academic integrity by not representing AI-generated content as their own work, and describing how they used AI in completing their own work. They should follow the established guidelines of their teacher for citing AI sources, such as using APA format, and respect privacy and intellectual property when utilizing AI tools. By doing so, they can effectively leverage AI to support their learning in an ethical and responsible manner. And then it goes through that statement that I mentioned, violation of the aforementioned AI guidelines is a form of academic misconduct and will result in, and then it lists out a consequence progression that is real similar to what would happen if there were other academic misconduct situations that occur. Thoughts on this at, at, at a board level?
All right, we can just deal with AI at a board level, like this policy, because this can take forever. I mean, I don't want to jump on Nate Coach's stuff there.
Yep.
My 13-year-old just told me, he's like, they'll never catch me.
Correct.
He's like, I can dumb it up to a seventh grade level, the teacher's never going to know. And he was going through all these sources and how he can use AI.
For sure.
And he's already using AI to dumb it up, and these kids are so smart. And they're, they'll never know. And I can tell AI not to play AI, because he said Nate can read it, and he can pick out AI stuff. But I can make AI get rid of words that teachers and people are used to seeing that AI programs put in. And he's like, I, I was like, I'm out. I, I just, like, my kid is super smart, but he'll use AI to do everything for him. And I'll never be able to catch him.
It's also AI to track AI, so it's just.
So that's my only concern.
All you can do is, what, what they have here is about all you can do.
No, I agree.
And every time this conversation comes up, in, in, in whether it's the Blue J Table or the smaller group, or the faculty meeting, the faculty crew as a whole, it always boils down to, if, if you're really struggling with this, and if you, you, you feel there's any chance kids are pulling the wool over your eyes as to what's their work and what's not, you can always use a blue book, or a paper and pencil, or, I, I, I will give Aaron Marvin credit for this quote every time I say it. Aaron Marvin, a couple of years ago, when AI was just starting to, to, to touch our world, if you really want to know what a kid knows, ask them. And, and, and so, yes, there's, well, I, I, I am not in the world of saying we, we completely do away with screens in schools. There are ways to balance the, the, the old way with the new way, in, 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 in ways that kids can't completely circumvent being able to prove, prove what they know or what they've learned. So, it's, it's a relatively general and short AI policy for students. But I feel like it, it, it checks the boxes that we need checked, and, and doesn't go any further than that. I mean, there are schools who go out and purchase school-based AI subscriptions for all their kids and staff, and I'm certainly not advocating for that. Yeah, and, and.
Are staff using tools, right, to check?
Yes.
On electronic submissions already, just like?
Especially in our, in our, like, English departments, places where there's a lot of writing going on, yes.
Are staff using AI? Like, are staff able to use AI to write whatever they want to write, like letters? Because I know what happens in around a district, just because I know that some of the principals are like, I just use AI, they write my entire thing for me.
And this is not included in here, but the, the, the Blue J Table team was also working on some language for staff, which maybe we can infuse at some point into our employee handbook, right? Like, that's a different set, yeah, right? That's a different set of rules, different, different conversation for a different night, but.
We'll beat that, because we'll beat this to death, and it's not going to go anywhere, because I agree, the policy is great, because you're never going to be able to all encompass it.
Several months ago, when Justin brought this forward, the conversation, I actually asked him, are you talking about artificial intelligence, AI, or are you talking about academic integrity, AI? And I think what we're trying to get to the heart here is, in the old days, it was cheating, okay? Now cheating has new different forms. It's more important to me that we hired Paula Hayes, who's going to be a phenomenal addition to our district, and actually teach our kids to prepare how to write an APA or an ML-style paper, and how to cite sources. And, yeah, colleges are antiquated, and they're still going to have to be able to do that in their professional career, if that's the path they choose. And they're going to have to be able to read a document and say, does this make sense? Is, is it purposeful? Is it mine? Is it not? This is kind of giving the school, principal, teacher some clout for being honest and using it appropriately. We're going to see probably suggested many, many, many more AI policies. This is all we need for right now, but be prepared, more's going to be coming.
That was my only comment. It's a good, it's a good start, I think, that this, it, it needs tweaking, but it's a, it's a good start to get it in there and tweak it as we need it.
My only suggested edit, and it's kind of nitpicky, but in the second paragraph, I would just ask that the "as permitted by the teacher" get moved to the front of the sentence, because otherwise the students are going to read, "Students may use AI tools." Oh, done! I'm done reading. So I, I don't know, I guess that's just one, I would just like to say, "As permitted by the teacher, student may use AI tools, tools to complement their learning, blah, blah, blah."
I'll make note of that. Anything else? That's all I got for you tonight, folks.
Is anyone making a motion?
I wish us all luck on AI in the next five years.
I'm stepping up on the transparency stuff, but we'll.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025, 2026, 2012 student handbook as presented.
Oh, second.
We have a motion by Stacy, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed? None heard, motion carries. Next, we move to approval of the 2025, 2026 co-curricular handbook.
Mr. Updike is not here, so he did share this with me, and he told me that there were no significant updates, other than that it's being updated for the upcoming school year. I asked Justin to pig-team share if there's any questions or concerns that you had within it. I don't have anything noted or flagged to call to your attention, because from what I understand and what I reviewed, it does look like the same document, just to be prepared for this year. Spoken as a very non-sports person.
Yeah, no, I didn't, I wasn't aware of any conversations or any requests, coaches, staff, Phil, anybody that was talking about or considering any changes or updates to activities code or handbook for this year. I was not aware of any.
Any issues or concerns with as presented? If there are none, someone willing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025, 2026 co-curricular handbook.
Second.
Motion by Mitch, second by Stacy. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None heard, motion carries. That's a lot of paperwork tonight. All right, next we move to the school forest CAM3 update report.
I hope you've been driving by and see how beautiful it looks with the parking lot and the grass, and it looks like a usable space. We have teachers already inquiring, making plans for this upcoming school year. Justin's been very active out there as well. Did you want to share anything?
Well, not, not active out there as much as reconnecting with John Grossman and some of the resources that he's able to connect us with. And I think we've got all four core areas covered in terms of outside agencies and experts that are willing to connect with our teachers to help get them engaged in features of that property specific to that spot. So, yeah, good, had a good conversation, a couple hours with John last week. And the, the, the physical chore now, hopefully between now and September, is going to be getting the walking trails that were kind of ready to go about two years ago, which are going to be a little bit, a little bit brushy now. We'll feed some mosquitoes and get that taken care of, and then connecting the new parking lot with what we had perceived to be the old parking lot with the trail system that we had pre-existing. So, I don't think we're at the spot yet where we want to make trails permanent, but very quickly within, I would say, a year or two of having staff out there with kids, and they tell us what we really want to have is spots to, to, to go to, or features to, to, to access. At that point, then we maybe spend some time and resources on trails that are more permanent, accessible, and more permanent features of the landscape. I, I would hate to do too much of that and then find out, well, that's not really a spot that teachers utilize in their engaging of, of kids in the curriculum out there. So, anyway, that's, yeah, it's exciting to be able to get back at it a little bit. And yes, the parking lot looks amazing.
Yeah. Thanks to Pilik and Wick and all the support that happened there. We sure appreciate our community partners in helping us get things up and running. As far as our litigation situation, we're still in the 90-day waiting period for response. There is no new updates other than what I shared with you last month.
Okay, thank you. Next, we move to district-related positive happenings.
We had a parade.
Yes.
Parade went well. He made it all the way, almost to the end without running out of candy, so things were good. We had new banners that showed our random support and thanking the community.
If you didn't get to see the pictures or weren't at the parade, I thought the banners were phenomenal. Thanks to Jen and Nate Coach for getting those up, and I just thought it was very fitting to, to thank our community and public, and we've got that captive audience and help everybody feel part of it. It just was really a good, well, receipt day.
Mike drove the tractor again.
Yeah.
And Charlie here in the morning helping. My husband Al, Gabe and Ada were on the float, so it was kind of nice to have some older kids helping with. I have a thought for next year, too, about, you know, it gets really tight, and there's kids throwing candy and kids running out. If we have some people walking on the sides to help with that, that would be super helpful, because I walked it and was able to do one side this time. But, yeah, anyway, thoughts I need to write down, probably.
Thank you, Jen, for all the coordination and really came together nicely.
I'll piggyback off the parade. The class of 2027, so the going to the juniors, reached out to the parade organizers and asked if they could sell popsicles, something that I guess was done years ago for the fundraising for the DC trip, and they gracefully approved it. Over the course of about two hours, the students raised $1,044.
Nice!
They're shook.
They're marketing, man.
I was, I was telling everybody, come on. I mean, they were, the people were like, throw them $10. I'm like, I just did for you.
Yeah, we received many, many donations.
Nice.
Because they're like, I don't want a popsicle. They're like, we'll take a donation. Okay. So, it was great. They did great.
All that money will stay in their student account for them to use for prom and graduation and, you know, things of that nature, so.
It was the craziest, busiest forum I think I've seen here, honestly. That was packed.
It was great.
I hope Donan attended the Athletic Hall of Fame banquet, and that was very well-attended, and the inductees were very excited to have that honor. So, it's a pretty cool thing that they're still able to do in the community. Pretty cool.
Good news for the soccer and football crew that compete up there, that turf on that by our stadium, is, looks like a different spot than it did two springs ago, two summers ago.
Very cool.
So, maintenance program that we've been working with, and the folks that have been helping out with the heavy equipment, it's, it's making a very positive impact. Of course, Mother Nature did hurt this year.
It helped a little.
It's, it's, it's much improved. I, I, I feel better about our soccer and football teams, for sure.
Well, they went heavier with the, you know, last year was kind of a trial period and get some seed down, but this year they did triple the amount of material they put down.
Yeah.
In order to work on the leveling and things of that nature, so.
It's heading in the right direction, is what I'm trying to say.
Put down, uh, well, I'll talk about.
Any other? One more board meeting until students come back.
No. Actually, our next board meeting staff will already be back, so.
True.
August 20th.
Well, I'm Justin Lohner, your first game. We're, we're a week earlier this year, so we'll have like three games in before school starts.
But we're not wishing away summer, right?
Right. No.
So, not to, it's almost done.
All right, next we move to WASP, correspondence and updates.
Oh, positive things.
Yes.
I have nothing to share at this meeting.
Okay. So, next up is executive session. We will adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 sub 1, sub C, to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility specifically to consider individual administrator-staff contracts, and to consider employment, compensation, and performance evaluation of the district administrator. Additionally, the session will include approval of minutes from the June 26, 2025 special meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 1C, to consider employment, promotion, compensation, performance evaluation data for any, that's what it says. Employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction, or exercises responsibility specifically, consider individual administrator-staff contracts, track or tracks, and to consider employment, compensation, and performance evaluation of the district administrator, and to include approval of the minutes from the June 26, 2025 special meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion to adjourn into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard, motion carries 5-0. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.